Okay, for everyone, we're having a technical problem. So you'll begin to see some activity behind us. And it affects our podium and this little desk right here. And so we're going to move that public input until once we have the camera fixed. And if you see some activity, that's what it's about. So Superintendent?
All right, well, good morning. We're going to get started with our agenda today. And 3.01 is a review of the middle and high school dues and fees policy. The 6152, this was a policy that was brought to the board a while back. And there was some question about the charge of dues and fees in middle and high school for specific courses. And the board set some directives at that time that altered the way that schools were collecting dues and fees for some of these courses, which were considered extracurricular courses, elective-type courses. And as a result, some of these programs, they've struggled a bit in terms of operating these programs in the way that they had previously because of the loss in some of the revenue that supported these programs. And so the middle and high school principals have been working alongside me and others for the past couple of months as they've been trying to adjust and make this policy, the previous policy work. And have come back and asked that we consider some revisions to the existing policy that would allow, in accordance to state statute, some of the collection of dues and fees for extracurricular courses. And so I sent to the board the Neola policy, which you'll have in front of you, the 6152. And you'll see there are some changes, which really just captures the language in statute, which is 1003.01, where it defines extracurricular courses as non-core courses. And above in 1003.114, it describes core courses as language arts reading, mathematics, social studies and science, in grades pre-8 through 5, and then courses in grades 4 through 8, and then again, the same courses in grades 9 through 12. And so really, what the first paragraph there where you see the strike-throughs in the green is capturing the language in 1003.0115 to include courses not defined as core, which may include but not limited to physical education, fine arts, performing fine arts, career education, and courses that may result in college credit. And I've had Mr. Johnson to work with Neola as well to review this, to ensure that we are in accordance with statute if we make the changes to the existing policy, which would allow for the collection of dues and fees for these extracurricular courses only and restrict them for any core courses as defined in statute. So along with this document, the middle and high school principals provided a chart that we would include in our course directory so that parents and students who enroll in these courses that are considered as extracurricular are able to advertise the dues that would be associated with those courses. This is a much shorter list than what they had previously. They've done a good job of really narrowing it down to those courses that they really need to be able to charge some dues and fees in order to cover the cost of needed materials for these courses. And these courses do align to the definitions that are provided in state statute. So with us today are representatives from our middle schools and high school principal groups that have worked on this. And I don't know how many times we've sent it back and forth together, and they've made some adjustments to it. They're here today to answer any questions that you might have about the dues and fees. But I am asking that we review the policy. I know you've had a chance to do that individually, that we talk about it collectively, review the high school fees and the middle school fees that they are asking for your approval of before we bring this policy back for, on our next board agenda for tentative approval. So I'll just open it up for board discussion. And again, we have lots of folks here. Mr. Ward has been working on this as well and can answer questions that you might have as well about any other costs associated or discretionary budgets and things that I know somebody will ask some questions about. So I'm going to turn it over to the board for discussion on this item, and we'll call up any of those that you might want to hear from this morning.
Hey, board members?
I have to say, I was pretty surprised to see the high school fees banned at zero.
Right. So the reason why they felt like that they could go to zero on the course is because your high schools have very active booster programs. So the costs really come through the marching band and those extracurricular activities to which the boosters oversee the cost of those programs. The difference in middle schools is that they don't have booster programs, or if they do, it's a very small group. And so they're not able to support the regular courses as the high schools are.
And you heard from every high school, right? Like, I know that the dynamics of different booster clubs are different in different schools. So that all the high school principals felt that their boosters were strong enough to support a band.
Yes. And they are, there's three of them here this morning that are representing those that, and they met extensively as a group and went over. Some of these will say, like, not to exceed a certain amount. You'll see with band in particular, one of the most frequent variables that we heard had to do with the numbers of trips, the competitions that bands might...
The cost of music, the cost of music was a big deal.
Right. Particularly in the middle school where you see the amount not to exceed, it's because some bands do a lot more traveling, some bands have a lot more competitions that they participate in, while others do not. And so that's really what the cost differentiates.
Where is the do not exceed on the band?
It's on the middle school.
It's on the middle school one.
It's not the high school one.
It's not because they're not charging a fee for the band class, only the extracurricular after-school marching band, those activities that are run by the booster program.
So what about the music for the band classes? Will that be covered by us? Because I thought it was covered by a band class fee previously.
In the middle schools, that is true. Does somebody want to speak to the, and this is, this is an audience participation item. So there's lots of head nodding, but we do have, the microphone is working. Hopefully, the video will be working soon, but we can hear you if anybody wants to come up and speak to any of these questions. So I wish we were all in one big collaborative circle to have this discussion, but we're...
So do we have camera now? Are we good?
Do you want us to pause the meeting?
Okay, so we're going to pause for 30 seconds. Okay, so we continue to have technical difficulty, but just know that it's going to get your profile. It's like we're Jesus straight on. All right, we're ready to go again.
I'm fine with that. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Mrs. Cudicula, the middle school rep. I'm at Carver Middle School. And so the question as far as the band fees, there are different schools that participate, and a lot of them do travel. As far as the actual course hours, it's based on course, not extracurricular activities. Various schools, Wendy Hill, for example, their cost of band to fund their band is about $36,000 a year. And so their fee, they have more students as well. At Carver, we have 43 students in concert band. And jazz band, you have some schools that have over 100, 150 students. So that cost does vary based on those fees, donations and fundraisings as much as possible. So no student will go without being able to participate because they can't afford the fees, but really, every school is different.
So can you just speak to, and I know you said middle school, right?
Yes.
I'm assuming middle school and high school, they do receive a portion of a budget, let's so to speak, for things like their FSBA dues and some of the entrance fees into the competitions, like your concert competition and your marching band competition. But outside of that, that $100 doesn't go very far.
No, it does not. No, it doesn't cover much at all. So pretty much the schools end up funding that, finding a way to have to pay for that.
Right, okay. And that's why I was confused about the high school. I think that was Dr. Burns' question, is that the middle school at least has a fee option where the high school doesn't. So is there a fee option for high school, or you guys felt like you didn't need it?
No, we don't have a fee option. Most of the kids that are in our core courses during the day, they don't pay a fee. But if they're in the extracurricular, that's when the charge comes in.
But this says no charge.
It's no charge for any core band classes that we have during the day.
So like...
If they're in elective at night, marching band, then they'll pay.
Like, I did...
But they could be in concert or band one, band two, band three, there is no fee for that.
But usually, like, a kid in, at least one of those classes, right, would be like marching band class?
Yes.
Now, would you put that kid in band one, two, or three instead of marching band class? Is that how that would work?
They go through an array of band classes at the school. It doesn't matter. If you join marching band, then you'll pay a marching band fee.
What is that fee amount?
Some of them run between $300 and $400.
Which is comparable to any high school sports program, too.
Do they practice marching at school?
Yes, at night.
At night?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not part of the class? I think I, I think we did it as part of the class.
It was part of the class.
Our favorite kids are...
It was a little bit ago.
I'm sorry, not me, not you, just to clarify. But I think we're similar.
I wanted to ask about the key actor of school. One of the parents had called me, not from your school, but from one of the other high schools, and said that the marching band fee is $1,000. Is that accurate in many of our schools?
Well, I will tell you, if a kid is in marching, jazz, or concert band, those are all separate fees at East Ridge High School. And I have seen them come in, it may be $400 for marching, $300 for jazz. So it depends on which ones the kids join and what they participate in.
No single program is $1,000. It must be a group of...
I've seen the top one, it's about $400.
But do a lot of kids, like, band kids, do they choose to do all three so that it's kind of like, is it a chunk of kids that pay $1,500 or $1,000 or...
Yes, it is. But those kids do stay in most of the programs all year.
Don't you fundraise as well? I remember...
Yes, they do. They do major fundraising.
Major fundraising, right? Right. And I haven't had a kid in band in high school. She didn't do that. But middle school, we did it. And that, our band director was continuously running fundraisers because the fees were not enough even to support the program.
My daughter's in band, and we're arguing. Chocolate bars.
Always.
Well, that's been consistent since the 70s then.
Yeah. The chocolate bars have just got to fall.
They are delicious.
I have a couple of questions. As a parent of two former band geeks, serious geeks, I have a question.
I resemble that remark.
I am most familiar with Taverri's and Eustace. However, I know that in Taverri's, in the past, the students were allowed to do things that automatically would reduce their fees just based on service that they perform. Is that also true still? And with this, it would still be true?
Yes. If you were fundraising stuff, no kid has ever turned away if they can't afford to be in band.
Okay, so if the student really wanted to be in, there are things they could do to reduce the cost for their parents. And my last question, and again, I'm sorry, it's going to be unique to Taverri's, but I know that you had your jazz band that met after school. Now, that would have a fee, but at the time, my son was there, he also had the option of doing things to lower those fees. Do you know if that is still true?
Yes, ma'am. They do, they kind of set a general fee if their parents work the concession stand, they work the concession.
Right.
Each activity reduces their fee down to basically they could pay nothing if they've done service for them.
Okay. Well, I'm a premier concession paying parent, so my services are available, and thank you.
That's a really good option. I like that. How are we, like, doing with fundraising this year? Like, last year fundraising was awful, right? Because we shut it down. It's not their fault. Is fundraising back to normal yet, or do we still have policies against it?
We've done a couple. I've got kids at every level. Mr. Dodd does, too.
Are y'all, is y'all school fundraising good?
We're doing fundraising.
Like, it's back to normal?
We're just starting to do fundraising, yes.
Well, a majority of the fundraisers aren't even door-to-door fundraisers now. They're, they're more social media-driven or more to, I mean, I think our band did a SNAP fundraiser where you can just donate money, which is probably the smartest thing to do of all of them.
Yeah.
So what happens to this document? Where does this document go? Is this just informational for us, or is it going to become part of our policy?
It is informational, but it is going to be part of what the, the schools will advertise in their course directory so that parents know upfront that if their child's taking that course, there is an associated fee with an explanation of exactly what the fee is for.
Then would it not be more reasonable for the high school fee to, rather than zero, that it reflect what we just talked about? That marching band's this amount, jazz is this amount, concerts this amount, in this document is all I'm asking.
Well, I think that's jumping into the after-school activities. I think what we're trying to address today is, is the classes. If you're taking a class for credit during the school day, what are the costs associated with that?
But if I were a parent and I got this document, I'd want to know what it's going to be upfront for my child to go to. I mean, that's the purpose of this document, yes.
And I think, I think that that's, that's the tip of the iceberg of a larger conversation, you know, because, you know, once, I mean, as we talk...
Go ahead. Then I'll insert one more thing, and wait, just one second.
Sure, go ahead.
So I also think there should be the credit that we're speaking about. If you work concession, what does that look like? So if a parent wanted to work, they know what that credit amount's going to be? If this document is going to be included, so that parent's making a decision?
I don't know if every school does it the same way, though. I know they send letter, they'll probably send a letter home so Taverri's band students would receive some sort of communication, Eustace High School band students would receive, and it's probably specific to what the schools have done in the past, is what my assumption is versus everybody doing the same thing.
But as we're bringing everyone together, wouldn't the consistency for the...
I don't know if you bring everybody together, Mr. Nice.
Uh-huh? No, 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 no. We have, if, if there's a credit for working the concession, that would be universal, right? Or should it be? I guess that's the point.
So, but what, I think there's some schools that use the athletic boosters to do the concession stands, and the band boosters don't. I don't, I may be way speaking out of term, but I don't know that that's...
There's not a one size fits all.
I think that perhaps, what I remember is that the band directors prepare quite a lengthy handbook for parents. And usually, all that kind of thing is spelled out in the handbook. So I think if we just ask the principals to make sure that the band directors do include all of this information in this parent handbook, and usually, there's a meeting in the evening where the parents go and the band directors go through this extensively, I think we could clarify that. And I think we could take care of perhaps your concern about in writing.
I think that's good.
If we put it in the handbook and we made sure that every band director goes over it. I mean, we could even go so far as to have parents sign a note saying receipt of this handbook, and that way, that covers that.
Because like, my daughter, it was so clear. Like, and down to, like, of course, she had to play the tuba, but like...
He's not in the marching band.
Like, we had to, if you were going to play the tuba, you, you need to purchase this mouthpiece, and it needs to be your own. I mean, it was really detailed, so.
And that would be unique to your daughter.
He's just been doing a good job at that.
Because of the instrument she plays, not the whole band.
Yeah. Yeah, it was down to the instrument.
I'm good with that.
There is a parent handbook that goes out, and we usually get it somewhere in June to go through it as principals and stuff. And then they have their meeting later on before the kids get into the course, and, well, not in the course, but join marching band or jazz or concert band. So they do have a parent meeting going over all of these things.
I'm totally fine with that, but totally fine. Okay.
So I think that some of this, some of my opinion on this really is, you have to almost back up to understand. Now, I think kids going on trips and riding uniforms and things of the sort, I see that those are students' individual obligations. Now, I think trips are no different than a field trip, right, or going off to a competition, that kind of thing. Uniforms, it seems like, you know, a lot of these folks will have polos made, and the kid keeps the polo or a t-shirt or what have you for band. But I think, let's say you get into the sheet music part now. Okay, so now you're, now you're talking about really their instructional materials, right? And is that a kid's obligation to pay for that if they're taking the course? What other courses are we charging kids for their instructional materials? All right, so it really, I almost think that this conversation needs to go back to some of the body of text here in the proposed policy. And that's where I'm going to challenge a little bit on the statutory ability for us to even do so. Because the statute that's referenced here is really for class size compliance. The definition of all these classes to define core curricular versus extracurricular, that's the class size amendment law. That tells us how many students can be in a class. So basically, the policy is proposed here, any AP class can have a fee, all PE classes can have fees, ACE classes can have fees. I don't think that's the intention of that statute. That's just to figure out whether you have 18, 22, 25 kids in a class, not whether you charge them to take the course.
Wait, this statute?
Yes, that, the, the green line here about the activities not required by core curricular courses, they'll go down there, courses which may include but are not limited to physical education, fine arts, performing fine arts, career education, and courses that may result in college credit. That's the class size amendment statute. That tells you how many students you can have in a class. It doesn't tell you that you can't fund those kids. Because I would, I would point to Florida statute 1,000.01, which reaffirms Article 9 of the Constitution that says kids get a free education, and we're going to charge them fees. I would also point to the other statutory references on here that talk about fees. And they say that you can charge fees for pre-kindergarten programs. They say you can charge fees for non-residents. None of these students that we're talking about are non-residents or pre-kindergarten kids. So statutorily, I question whether or not we're even allowed to charge fees. So I think that that's, that's going back, I mean, aside from field trips and uniforms and personal lines that the kids are getting, totally get that. But I think that supplies for the class become incumbent on us to provide, not to pass those costs along to kids. And I guess where I'm passionate on this one is, like, here's the lens I'm looking at. All right, so thinking about our school district, that we are so poor that because we have so many students qualifying for free and reduced lunch in our district, that the entire district gets it. That we are in the upper quartile of the state for free and reduced lunch, students. Median income of Lake County is $54,000. Look at Leesburg, $37,000. One of our teachers makes more than the median household income of Leesburg. And we're going to charge fees? We're going to tell them that you got to pay $100 to be in band? It doesn't sit well with me. And that's where I think that we've got, we've got to look closer at this and say, okay, yes, there are costs associated with these programs, and I don't want schools to be on their own for them. I think one thing that I found was surprising when I sat down with Mr. Ward is how much maintenance schools are responsible over the school operating budgets. It was very eye-opening for me. So I always had this impression that we were giving schools this operating budget, and they were using that to fund their academic programs. And then I became some surprise of how much maintenance was on their, was on their plate, that I don't think is their responsibility to be paying for out of their school operating funds. So I would be very interested, before we set fees, what is the maintenance that they're responsible for? Let's take that off their plate, and now say, what is the true cost of funding your academic programs and ensure that you're funded for it?
But can I add to that while we're sort of in the finance of local schools part? It's recently come to my attention that there is no mechanism, like, when you have cost centers in general, so like, our school would be a cost center, in general, people in cost centers then have an ability to charge against the cost center. You know, as a graduate student, my professor, chemistry was a cost center, my professor himself had another number for his cost center, and we would submit any supplies we needed to my professor, and, and he would make sure it fit the grant, and then it would get ordered. The schools that I've talked to people at, they're, like, teachers don't even know that that concept can exist. Like, they're like, I don't know, I asked the bookkeeper, or I don't know, somebody told me we don't have money. So it's, there's no, there's no mechanism for them to officially even ask for money. So, so then you get teachers writing grants, but really, they should be asking the school first in some sort of an official way, more than, can I have this? Can I please? Like, their, their boss is not their parent.
And, and what happens, because I've heard from, from enrichment teachers who have called me up and said, okay, so I went to my teacher or my principal to ask for $300 so we could buy new PE balls, and they told me to go have a walk-a-thon. I said, how in the world do you not have $300 in your school operating budget? And that's when I learned, well, there's this maintenance piece, or the schools are responsible for all these things that have nothing to do with their academic programs, whereas I thought they had that funding.
And if you have no mechanism for everyone to submit what their needs are for a cost center, then you have no mechanism for a principal to look at the full umbrella of what needs to be budgeted for. And then you have no way for us to know what that principal needs, if he needs more money or less money or whatever. Because we have no idea how the budgets break down once they hit school district. I don't think we know. I don't know how to look out. I mean, I could go to Scott and sit with him, but then no one else but me knows, and that doesn't look us any good.
And here's where it gets especially convoluted. Okay, so I've had, I guess, between my kids, 28 first days of school between them. That's 28 school supply lists I've seen come home over the years. And that, and how many of those have on the bottom, science lab fee, $10, or $15 or something along that nature? Because they want to do labs, right? And so apparently, they're not funded for that at the school level to do that. So now, as I look at, as I look at this proposed policy, and this is where I think we're going to really have to kind of narrow this focus here. So if my kid's in the AP Biology course, there could be a lab fee for the supplies to dissect a fetal pig. But if my kid's in Biology won honors, because that's now considered core, then there's no lab fee for that, you know? So, but the AP class could result in college credit, so that puts in the criteria of this proposed policy.
Not to mention $15 per science lab fees is so underfunded.
I'm going to hear it, Mrs. Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may. I, actually, Mr. Dodd, I agree with, I appreciate the history lesson on the statues and all of that. And I appreciate a lot of what you said, but I think we're missing a very vital piece. And by the way, Dr. Burns, there is a process in the schools where people can make their, just their things that they need, they can make it known to their principal.
Excuse, excuse Mrs. Cunningham.
That's okay. Thought it was me.
I think, I think there's gremlins today after Halloween in our system.
That's what I mean, totally.
Okay. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Mrs. Cunningham, go ahead.
I can't speak to every school, but I would venture to say that probably the majority, the way majority of the schools, because there are policies and procedures that require that there be, when the principals get their budget, and we have a lot of experts sitting out there, so certainly, they can speak up. But when they get their budget, they do look at their whole school. Now, granted, as a principal, I'm sure they would welcome you taking some of their responsibilities away, because that would give them freedom to use some of their monies otherwise. But they do, now, they have to do it within reason, because of course, money's not unlimited. But they do allow money for different departments, and they have department chairs who know what the budget is for the history department or the science department. And if there are faculty members within that department that need things, there is a process where they can go by requesting their forms to be filled out. Now, I understand this phenomena, especially in elementary school, of asking the bookkeeper, because the bookkeeper has the running record. But that's really not the proper procedure, because the bookkeeper can't grant anyone permission to purchase anything without the principal's written signature. So I think perhaps there's some misunderstanding of how that process works. I don't know if any of the principals want to speak to it, but that's, I mean, I just hate for that thought to be out there, that there's no mechanism for a teacher to get some basketballs or whatever they need.
But many schools do have, to Dr. Burns' point, no mechanism in place. Like, I admit, I talk at a lot of teachers.
And I couldn't, I didn't pull, but the teacher, that's what teachers are talking about.
That's right.
And from multiple schools. And I believe, I believe you, I believe you probably believe it's true.
Okay, well, I think if, I think if someone is reporting that there's no mechanism in place, I think before we as a board decide that it's a problem in all schools, we probably need to rely on staff to find out where those problems exist, and then we need to deal with those particular schools. Because I would be very shocked, and I could be wrong, but I would be very shocked to find that the majority of our schools don't have processes in place for people to get items that they need.
And if I can, I'm just going to add on, like, just thinking, first, I'm just going to let you guys know, I'm not, I'm definitely opposed to taking away options for fee programs. Like, it actually hurts my heart a little bit. And so what I hear you saying is, if we don't have money to supply PE balls, right, then they can't do a walk-a-thon, they're not charging fees, then we're not going to have PE balls. And so what is worse? We have a waiver, we have a mechanism for families who cannot afford a fee that's associated with the class that the student tends to say, I can't afford to do this. We also have parents that can afford to do more, which I have seen in multiple classes, and they don't have a problem doing it. And that, the notion of a free education is not accurate anyway, we all pay taxes, we know what that, what that really looks like. However, saying, I'm sure, I'm sure Mister Carr is here, and it scares me a little bit when you say, let's look at their maintenance budget, cause I'm sure that's when he was like, oh my gosh, please don't look at their maintenance budget. I had a conversation with my kid's principal for almost a year about just having trees trimmed, you got doors to be paying, the cost of maintenance is ridiculous as well. And so I just feel like that's, that's what the legislature does to us, right? They say, here, we're gonna give you more money for this, but then we go over here to these dollars and they're depleted. So we're just taking money from one pot and putting it in another pot that doesn't rectify the situation, it simply makes a hole in another department. So I, knowing that the cost of music, so you, so to speak, is what you had mentioned before, that they have to buy, they are not even supposed to copy music. So it depends if you have nine clarinets or fifteen clarinets, I'm supposed to buy a piece of music for all of them, which might be different in Matilla than it is at Gray or the, the larger schools, the K eight middle school, I don't, anyway. The cost of music alone, from what I've heard from middle school band directors, is phenomenal, like astronomical. And so as our prices continue to increase, and we are an underfunded school district, I don't know how we continue to maintain the level of programs that we want without the option for schools to charge a fee, knowing that we have an option that you can opt out, so to speak, from paying the fee.
But we don't pick and choose which laws we follow. So I would like to see the statutory obligation that we're allowed to charge fees to people for a class, because what we grabbed was the class size amendment statute.
Right, I hear you on that.
And, and said, let's charge fees for classes not subject to class size. That's not, I'm sure, the intention of that particular statute. And, and so Article nine guarantees it, a thousand point oh one guarantees it, a thousand one guarantees it. I mean, all these places say that, yes, you can derive revenue from your state and local tax sources.
Right, but, but.
But it doesn't say you can charge a kid.
But that means, then should we just limit the programs that we offer? Because we can't, we can't afford to give students what they need in the aviation program or in the culinary programs, and we just don't offer them because they're not free?
So we're not doing that legally.
But that's what, I, I.
We can't do that illegally.
We can do that legally.
So we need to come up with the funds.
Nobody has ever been sued for charging a fee, I'm just kidding.
Mister Dodd, Mister Dodd, if you were, if you're, and you've researched this, so everything I'm gonna acquiesce, cause I know that you're an expert. But if we, if we look at just funding and don't allow these extracurricular, because we are funding all the cores, right? So then are you advocating that if we can't afford to do it, then we just don't do the extracurricular?
No, what I'm advocating is that, um, okay, so, so one, we, I think before we come to any conclusion about fees, we need to take a closer look at these schools' budgets and understand how much maintenance have they been paying for? Have they been responsible for tree trimming? Have they been responsible for pressure washing? Are they responsible for resurfacing and parking lots? Like, there are things that they're just not funded for, and we're asking them to pay those things, or at least we have in the past. And so now, now before we can say, hey, you're responsible for that nine thousand dollar lawnmower, and because of that, we're gonna charge the kids an AP Bio a fee because our policy allows it, then, you know, we, we need to cover some things in this.
But then the maintenance department's gonna have to cover the lawnmower, and then what's that gonna take off the maintenance?
We're gonna be acting like the legislature.
So essentially we're charging the kids the lawnmower, because we're saying, we don't have money for the lawnmower, so we're gonna pay.
We are, because they use the property, I don't, I don't, it's not for me.
But you're not allowed to do that.
I don't know, but, but we charge taxes, so we're not.
Yes, because the statute says we can charge it, but the statute also says we, that we're, we can't charge kids in addition to that.
Can we get clarification on the statute then?
It looks like the right statute to me, it's literally titled fees, fines, and charges.
I, I have looked at the provisions that Mister Dodd shared with me, his memo, I thought it was very thorough. I don't disagree that it's extremely confusing. It's kinda like the, uh, the clubs that we had, a lawsuit that went to federal court over. You look at what the, what the statute says, and in that particular instance, as I recall, the issue was what was the definition of a secondary school, and there were seventy-five references to a secondary school in this Florida statutes, and about half of them said something different than the, the main statute. So this isn't, it's not unusual that the legislature passes laws or that they're, they don't make sure that they are in compliance with other laws they have at the same time. And I agree with you, I think it is confusing. I don't know if I'm ready to tell you it's black and white, that it's a yes or a no answer. I think there obviously is the position that you've taken, is that these things are not included in the statutes. And there's a good argument for that. There's also an argument for the other side, and, and I, and I look at this from the standpoint of, y'all bought a service to come in and redo your policies. And this is one of those policies, or at least it's a part of one that you modify at the theory, at your request for what you're going to do. And once you do that, then Neola guarantees that policy. They guarantee that they're complying with the statute, and they will defend us under the agreement that we have with them if there is an issue about that we are not in compliance with the statute.
I thought they don't guarantee it if we make modifications to their policy.
If they approve it, they do.
If they approve it.
And I was gonna finish. My suggestion for this is, you, you put together the policy that you want, that you think is the best for your circumstances, and then we take that policy to Neola and tell them, we have made a couple of changes, we wanna confirm that all or part of this policy is going to be guaranteed by you.
Alright, so here's my faith in Neola. So one of their references that they included here was repealed in two thousand eleven.
Yeah, I saw that.
Seriously, in two thousand eleven.
But that's their obligation, is it not? That's what they've stood on that obligation, that.
That's their, that's their mistake, and they need to correct it, and if that costs us some money to correct it, they would be obligated to indemnify us for what that costs.
So, so the statutes that are referenced here, like, though, that don't, these statutes don't reference the ability for us to charge fees for what we're asking to charge. These statutes say that we can charge fees for students who lose textbooks. They say that we can charge fees for students attending a, a, a pre-kindergarten program. They say we can charge fees, uh, for non-residents. They don't say we can charge a resident a fee to take an AP course, and that's what our proposed policy is allowing us to do.
Because AP courses aren't core.
Because those are, right, because they're not core for class size.
Why are you saying pre-k?
But it's just one of these statutes up here that's referenced.
Oh.
You gotta, you gotta read the statute and it says you can charge, um, fees for pre-kindergarten classes.
Okay.
Mister Johnson, this is.
And I think the statute does not say you can do it, A, B, C. It does not say you can't do it.
A thousand point oh one.
Doesn't say you can't.
Yes, it does.
I think there's interpretation to that language.
Have you read it?
Yeah, it's been a while.
It's, it's not even referenced in our statutory references, but it is the, the statute about fees. I, I, I think there's more to this before we say that we're ready to put this to bed.
In my mind, if, if Neola is going to say that that's the policy, that's the policy they use in other counties, and they're gonna stand behind it, then quite frankly, I would just think that that gives you greater flexibility in what you're going to be.
And again, uh.
I mean, unless they come through with something that says absolutely no, it says the exact opposite. And it, I don't think it says the exact opposite. It's, it's not as helpful as it could be, but it gives them an argument to make. But I don't, I'm not telling you that it's, that, I, I, I think that the points you make are, are valid.
So are we okay with saying, hey, your, your AP, AP chemistry class is a lab fee?
I'm okay with it, because I want the AP chemistry class to have the research thing.
Here.
So we, can I suggest something?
Like, um, in other states, there are, and, and we're starting to do it here already with class, um, the lists of, of class supplies, where they just ask for, like, right now, and here they're doing, you can do this list of class supplies, or you can give us twenty bucks, right? In other states, they just, at the beginning of the year, they just say, I, we are looking for a voluntary donation of three hundred dollars per kid. We want a hundred percent, we would like, we want, our goal is a hundred percent, um, participation at whatever level you can afford. And therefore it leaves it up to the parent. Most, of, where I live, most parents pay the three hundred. But it was up to what you could afford. I didn't, I couldn't afford it. I thi- I think I paid a hundred and fifty or something, like, it was something I could give.
I think the challenge.
You know, so that's legal within all laws.
Well, I, I understand that it may be legal, but I would be very uncomfortable with doing that. I think that there are some things that come into play that have nothing to do with the financial ability of the parent. And I don't think we need to put kids in a position where the ability of their parents to pay money is gonna determine our policies. I think perhaps what we need to do, uh, since Mister Dodd feels so adamantly about that, is that we need to get an answer to whether or not his objections are things that Neola will stand behind, or they won't. And then I think we need to move forward with getting a policy once we have that answer. I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying, but I think we all have our opinions, and if we just continue to argue about it, you know, you're gonna still feel very strongly that it's not appropriate. And we need to have an answer.
That I agree with.
Yes, because we, we need to get to the bottom.
So I would like to.
So wait, what is the answer we're looking for?
Okay.
Which, which classes are core classes?
No, one, what it, what are, what fees are even legal for us to charge? Because we've taken Neola's original policy and added a whole bunch of stuff to it. So is the whole bunch of stuff that we're proposing even legal for us to charge? And then secondly, I think from that point, you say, okay, if fees are legal, um, to what extent and what classes are they legal for? But then, I, I'm really interested in understanding what schools are ultimately being responsible for from a maintenance standpoint, standpoint, and, and from an academic standpoint.
But that's a separate topic than this.
These are multiple topics.
It is multiple topics.
No, 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 but I think that for the sake of this, if we get some consensus that we want, that we need to understand, to your core, is it legal for us to charge fees, right? That's what you were asking.
That's right.
That we need to sort out before we even entertain a policy, or any change to the policy. So Mister Johnson, can you take that on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I think that we, I think that we stop the discussion of this, does everybody agree? That we're gonna stop the discussion on this topic right now, subject to Mister Johnson getting back to us, and then we'll move forward. Does that sound good?
Uh, Mister, Mister Thies?
Yes.
I'll, I'll tell you, they, I mean, they have already, essentially expressed their opinion generally, but we'll confirm that. But the, oh, my microphone's not working.
But I also heard Mister, Mister Dodd ask for the Attorney General's opinion about this.
Okay, I think this is one of those instances, I'm just gonna throw this out there, um, that, we, do we wanna ask that opinion? I can't, okay, I can't imagine that there's not a school district in the entire state of Florida that's not charging fees, first of all. And so when we get the response, the Attorney General says no fees, we shut down sixty-seven county abilities to charge fees for their program. And how long has this been in place? And has there been a school district that has gotten their hand smacked or reprimanded or anything to any degree for charging a fee?
If it's legal, there's nothing to worry about. If it's not legal, then we should be concerned about it.
But can I add that, like, parents sued for seven or eight years about the free clause in Free and Appropriate Education, and after seven or eight years, just lost utterly. Like, they were crushed.
There it is.
So.
Mic drop, I'm just kidding.
So, I mean, we can feel free, but, like, Free and Appropriate Education is pretty much overturned, from what I can gather. Am I wrong?
Superintendent.
So, I, I just wanna share my comments based on, um, your conversation. Um, first of all, um, this policy was submitted to Neola prior to bringing it to you. I didn't wanna bring you a policy that they wouldn't stand behind. So they have already reviewed it, and they said, yes, that they, this is, this is their verbiage. One of the things, though, in, in conversation, and if we look at the middle where it talks about the, in the green, where it says courses which may include but are not limited to physical education, fine arts, performing arts, and career education, I'm totally in favor of putting a period there and taking out, um, in courses, um, for college credit. Since there was no intention of the, the, I or the principals to charge for those courses, and if you go back to their fee schedule, this is all they're asking to charge fees for. So I wanna make that point. The other thing that you mentioned was the maintenance. These folks will tell you that, um, I have told them that they're not to be paying for any of those maintenance costs that needs to be coming from the district. I've gone to Mister Carr and his team, and, and they've done some work, they've put together a pressure washing schedule that's gone out to all of the schools, paint schedules, taking all that responsibility off of our schools. They should not be paying for that, those types of things, and we've corrected that. So that is not something that they will be expected to pay for unless it's things that they want for beautification and things that are not, um, part of the regular maintenance schedule. The, the other thing I wanted to mention, and did you, did you wanna say anything about the maintenance costs? I know you've looked at their budgets and what it might, um, alleviate for them in terms of cost by removing the maintenance.
Yeah, so the conversations that I had the other day, we talked about the maintenance costs, and I sent him a list of projects last year. There were four or five projects mainly at the high school level. Uh, some of them were pretty extensive, but, but most of them were pretty general, but they were all things that would not be considered normally necessary maintenance. There were additional items, uh, things that were made for, out of convenience of beautification. But they, these are the schools that generally have the ability to do that. And remember, um, you know, when we think about this, we gotta think about all of our schools. And not all of our schools have sufficient funding to be able to do that. So what I had said was, even though they've been required to pay for their maintenance, a lot of our schools have deferred that maintenance because they cannot afford it. So if you just simply say, we'll cover your maintenance, they're not gonna get a revenue relief off of that anyway, or an expenditure relief off of that.
Can I ask, which, I'm sorry?
No, what I wanted to do is get off the maintenance thing, stay, stay with the policy discussion we're having, and then we can move into maintenance, actually, it's the next line item, three point oh two. So if we can stay with what we wanna do with this.
Okay, and then if we look at the.
When you said that, like, if there's nothing to worry about, then we can ask the question, I'm okay with that.
Right.
So are we considering the superintendent's suggestion about the period? Are we back to deciding something different?
Well, I think that we can talk about the period and, and take the other part out, or we can go back to the core of Mister Dodd's concern, is isn't legal to start with. And I would be more at peace knowing that answer.
But, I mean, so, so basically, so tell me, tell me again where that period would go?
After career education, taking out the line that says, and courses that may result in a college credit, taking that part out.
So this proposed policy would still potentially have fees for PE, which is a required course?
So, so let's look at the fee schedule, cause this was one of the things that, um, we, our principals put a lot of thought into. If we look at what they're asking for PE uniforms, which they all have PE uniforms, it's very consistent, probably every school district has PE uniforms. The parents will also have the option to purchase a specified T-shirt and shorts from another provider. If they want the official school uniform, they can pay the twelve dollars, I'm looking at the high school one. If they wanna order one on Amazon with school colors, they can, they can go to an alternative place and maybe find it even cheaper.
But are we gonna keep talking about this? Are we gonna, at the end of talking about this, decide we're gonna go back and, and get an opinion?
Well, that, that, that part there is not my dispute, absolutely. If the kid wants to buy a, a PE uniform from school, that's, that's, you know, there, it's not a monopoly, they can go shop elsewhere for other athletic clothes, and that's fine. But, but I don't think that this schedule then matches the policy as written. So somebody could come in the future and say, wait a second, we can charge a PE supplies fee.
Okay, so is a, is a will the board that we continue to talk about this? When, at the end of the day, we're gonna pull it anyway? Is that kinda where we are? Because it doesn't seem like there's a consensus that even this is where we're gonna land.
Um, I'm not sure what, uh, is this part of your presentation, the superintendent?
I do this.
I know, but is she, does she wanna go through it so that, like, we understand her points? That's my question.
But if it comes back, we can't charge the fee, then what?
It doesn't matter anymore.
It doesn't matter. I'm saying that we can go through this, and when we determine that we do need to amend the policy.
See, most of the stuff on here, I don't think there's any question about, because it's trips and uniforms. But the question is, I think for me, is that this fee schedule doesn't necessarily correspond with what's written in the proposed policy.
And, and the fee schedule won't go in the policy.
And if the policy comes back that we can charge the fees, then we can change maybe this, some of the things that they're asking for.
Exactly.
Neola said that they did approve this policy, they would support it. So we have that answer.
They approved it, but Mister Dodd had a very relevant point that wasn't answered, which is, are these policies? Cause I did not go back and read them, and I know you did.
Yeah, I did.
So then, and then the additional ones, I'm sure you'll make those available to Mister Johnson for research.
Yes, absolutely.
And if we need an Attorney General opinion, then there we are.
Call the policy next year.
Yep, and then how quickly does that take? Because I know that we've asked the Attorney General when we were trying to vote by Zoom, and, and I don't think we ever got an answer.
But in the meantime, we can still have schools ask for voluntary fees for whatever class they need.
But whatever we do in right now.
Right, voluntary, voluntary is even for the AP classes and the PE classes, they can ask for voluntary.
Until we, until we make a decision on this policy, whatever we have in place right now is still the policy.
Right, but I, I think that was part of the challenge of it, that I understand, because when we, when we said, okay, hey, you can't charge fees to, to be a, a seventh grader at a middle school anymore. Now suddenly, a lot of the revenue sources were, were cut off from schools, and so they moved to the donation approach, and they weren't getting the donations back.
Right.
Because they couldn't put a kid on fines list for not turning in a, a seventh grade class due, right? And so, so I, I, I recognize that the importance that they need to have the funding, that they need to have to operate their programs. And from my standpoint is, I, I wanna ensure that funding is in place. I just don't think that the kids are the ones to pay for it, I think it's this board to pay for it, you know? I thi- I think it's incumbent on us to pay for the supplies for their, their AP chemistry lab, for their PE equipment, for, um, the list goes on and on, for their art, for their art rooms to have supplies that they need. I, I think that's, that's just incumbent on us.
I think then we have to define supplies, because my supply list can be very different from yours, and my program could be different from yours, especially if my, if my fees are limited to that of a paintbrush or a pen.
Which is why I think we need to understand. Like, I would love it if, like, I don't know if you wanna do it, or if we want Doctor, uh, Mister Mock to do it, but like, to understand, cause she's saying how they have a mechanism, I'm hearing they don't have a mechanism of, of paying fees. I don't know what school budgets look like, they were, they're much bigger than I realized because of Title I. So I don't know how Title I budgets are spent, um, like, there's a lot of money at the school level that would be helpful to, for, for parents and, I'm not saying it's being misappropriated. I'm saying we don't know how it's spent.
And the other piece of that funding is that it's beyond just the school discretionary budget.
I got a little control.
You know, cause they're also receiving money back for CTE, AP dollars, for example, that could, you know, potentially go back and fund some of the, these courses.
I, I, I really think that we need to, um, stay on topic, but as far as how much money schools have with Title I budgets and return money from CTE, these schools have procedures that have been approved by staff and the superintendent. And for example, Title I, there are specific things in Title I that these principals have to know. And for example, Title I, there are specific things in Title I that these principals have to know that is really legally binding. And I don't think we need to start trying to second guess their decisions along with the Title I supervisor. I don't, I don't necessarily see that as my role. I think my role is to make sure that they're being legal. And I think that we have staff that takes care of that. I really, and I've done school budgets, I don't want to get, I don't think it's my job to get into trying to over manage or oversee, Mr. Ward does that. I don't wanna oversee the budget at Lake Mineola or, I don't know, Triangle El- Elementary, because there are a lot of things that you have to understand. For example, I've never been a high school principal. I would probably be very, be very lost to have to go into one of our high schools and make their budget for the year. I'd have to learn some stuff. And I'm supposed to know about that. So I don't know that we as people on the board are gonna understand the unique differences of individual schools to try and analyze their budgets and tell them how they should allocate funding on line items. I just don't think we have the equipment to do that. I don't even know, with all due respect to Mr. Mock, he's someone who audits. He's not a school principal. So I don't know that he would even, without having to teach himself, be able to do that. And I don't think that's the core of our issue.
How much money does Eastridge, how much money is in Eastridge's entire school budget?
Yeah.
Multiple millions?
Well, I mean, when you're considering all of their budget, you're considering like their employees and everything, you have multiple millions of dollars, absolutely.
So I feel like that's within our wheelhouse.
Well, we're talking about salaries of staff.
No, that, that, no, 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 no.
But that's what he has to factor in.
I don't think it's multiple millions at Eastridge.
It's usually.
No, 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 but, but the school isn't, what she's talking about is, is the dollars that are given per, per FTE. That's what she's talking about.
They're discretionary.
They're discretionary.
No, I'm talking about their school.
Two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, so Eastridge is two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that was allocated in their budget. And, and they have carryover, they have carry for from prior years.
How much?
Some of our, and I've, you can't hold me to the exact school, but some of our larger schools and, and parts of our county are sharing for.
Workshop, we talk.
Sometimes four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars on top of their regular budget. So some of them are getting close to three.
And then elementary schools, some of them are getting forty. So if I don't understand the difference between a school that's getting forty and a school that has Title I and therefore is getting two hundred thousand, or a high school that's, has five hundred thousand, I don't understand how we can understand how to fix the problem with very small school fees, which is a hundred percent A. Like, it's a, it's a small issue, but there's all this other funding around it. Like, we have to look at the picture.
And I, and I would caution the board members when they're looking at this, to not look at the schools that have, but to make sure they're looking at the schools that have not. We have some schools that don't have the AP funding that rolls every year after year. So I would hate for decisions to be made based on someone who has the money and not the ones that do not have it.
And, and I'm gonna tell you that is my biggest concern as we discuss this, is that we have seen, I mean, you guys know nationwide, we've seen programs closed. This board was adamant about providing music and art in our schools, but now we're saying we can't afford to offer those programs.
No, I think we're saying we can afford it if we prioritize it.
I don't know, I don't know that we say we can afford it, Mark, and we know, we're not funded adequately.
That's my stance. Okay, so, so he sent me a. So he sent me a list of beautification items or convenience items. And I say, okay, does that take higher priority than funding your art program? Probably not. Does that take higher priority than funding your music program? Probably not. Of providing lab fees for your science classes, so they can have the microscopes they need to do their DNA labs and so on and so forth? No, no. It seems like the highest priority should be funding the academic programs. And then if you wanna beautify your campus and you want to do some convenience items, then you get to that. Then you get to wrapping doors, then you get to buying logo tables, then you get to.
But have you seen the campuses? You have a campus that's got two thousand kids on it, give them a week and look at the campus. So we also don't want them walking onto these campuses that look like.
Now, I'm not saying routine maintenance. I'm not arguing for that. Like, routine maintenance obviously has to occur.
Right.
You know, I mean, if you've got potholes in your parking lot, that's not your school's job to, to, to pay for those.
No, I don't, I don't disagree. I'm just telling you that I, we've seen it, and we, if we wanna do a program well, I don't wanna consider cutting programs so that we can afford to.
No, that's not even on the table for me. Uh, no, it's, it's this board needs to figure out how to prioritize so that kids have the art and music, and that they don't have to pay for that.
But again, let's go back to, the core discussion was that we were gonna have Mr. Johnson come back with an opinion about policy in general. That I think for another day, this, I enjoy this robust conversation, but the fact is that we need to know, number one, can we charge the fees? Before we can even continue to have the debate about school budget. I will tell you this, as a board member, that we're at thirty thousand feet, and to even think that we jump into the minutia of trying to manage forty-three schools and those budgets, that's not our role. I will share with you, that's not, my opinion is that is not our role. So, um, so do we want to, for right now, stop and get an opinion? I, I think that Mr. Dodd, brilliant points, let's find out, is it legal? Because if it isn't, then we have to go back and pivot, right? And, and decide what programs, then if we ended up having to fund them, can we fund or not fund? And, and, and I think that if the principals went back and said, suddenly, because we can't afford band, that the parents would go absolutely bat. Right?
Yes.
And, and, or these other programs are prioritized, and then again, we look at our schools as each one is a community, and each school may react completely different. So I think we already had the mechanism in place to, to, for a parent to request a fee waiver. And, uh, I think we had all the machinery in place to take care of the programs, but let's first determine if it's legal. And that I would like to have as soon as possible.
I, I would like to mention a couple of points that have just been on my mind about the fee waivers, and one is that.
Okay, you just gonna keep on talking.
I, it's important for y'all to hear this stuff, because right now you've got all these documents, and the only time I can tell you right here.
But we don't even know if it's legal or not.
Okay, but, but let's talk about the fee waivers for just a second.
Oh, okay.
So, so this doesn't encompass everybody who's on free and reduced lunch. So we would be charging a kid who's on free and reduced lunch a hundred dollars potentially to go take band.
But that's everybody in this county.
No, 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 like, let's say you qualify, you're on your own.
But we don't do that anymore.
But if you did qualify on your own, none of these exemptions apply to, could necessarily apply to, because it, it takes a lower income threshold to check off box number one. So I might make too much money, put my kids on free lunch, and therefore I'm asked to pay a hundred dollar band fee. The other thing, okay, so if, let's say you go to some schools, let's say in your district, where ninety percent of the kids might apply for free, reduced lunch on their own. Well, now that, now that school has no money to operate because everybody got a fee waiver, so then how do we make up that funding? The board's gotta make that up, right? Otherwise you say, oh, you can't have band.
Fundraisers.
You know?
I do fundraisers.
So her district has to do fundraisers, meanwhile I got schools.
Everybody does fundraisers. In addition to these fees, there are so many fundraisers.
Right, but what I'm saying is that, that you might have a school where like, everybody's paying a fee, and you might have schools where nobody's paying a fee, and.
But you do understand nobody fills out the, the income form?
I, I do understand. So you'd have to then fill it out specifically just to get the fee waiver.
Right, okay.
For this, right, 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 yes, yes. But I'm saying there are people who apply, who could qualify for free and reduced lunch on their own that don't make any of the criteria on this list.
So do you wanna propose additions to the policy?
Well, it, it still goes back to your, isn't even legal.
Yeah, I was gonna say, then can we reduce that?
But I didn't wanna mention that, since we were talking about fee waivers.
Well, I'm glad you guys.
And we are working on that, um, Mr. Dodd, I know, um, Ms. Milk, and she came in, I know you spoke with her about that. And she's, she's looked into what other districts are doing in terms of, of fee waiver processes and applications, and so we'll have a recommendation to add that piece based on what we're seeing across other districts.
Your defense rests.
Thank you.
Okay, alrighty. Okay, Mr. Johnson, what kinda timeline do you see before we can come back and workshop this again?
Uh, if it's just Neola's opinion you want, it's almost immediate, if you wanted something from the Attorney General.
I thought you wanted a name G opinion.
That's going to be additional time. I have no control over it. I mean, we've had her come back and say, yes. We've had her come back and say yes right away, um, we've had her not answer the question.
It was her, the Attorney General, is that your turn?
Yes.
Sorry, I missed that part.
So.
We already got Neola's answer. Neola said yes to the policy the way that it is, so I think you were asking for.
And, and we, we're gonna have Neola's answer in writing specifically that this policy with these changes, you have this support for us offering it as the policy for the school board.
Here, here is, I think, maybe what I'd like to see, if it's okay with you, Mr. Dodd. I'd like specifically your question in reference to statute answered. That's what I'm looking for. So I want Mr. Dodd.
Who's answering that, Mr.'s, Mr. Johnson?
No, I want him to write it and get it to Mr. Johnson, and that question is what I want answered.
From Mr. Johnson.
From Mr. Johnson, whoever he goes up the ladder with.
You want the Attorney General to answer that question, right?
I think that's.
Is that what you're asking?
Well, I've, I've lost confidence in Neola when they cited policies that were repealed ten years ago, so, you know, I don't know, I don't know that they've read the statutes all that clearly.
What about the state? Would that be a better option?
The state?
I know, right?
Is there somebody at Department of Defense who can clarify, aside from the Attorney General?
Yeah, that was.
No, the answer is no.
The answer is no.
Okay.
Can you, Mr. Johnson, can you look at the statutes and give us your.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna talk to the Neola fellow about it. I mean, he's gonna either point something specifically out to me that answers your concerns, or he's not, so, I mean.
I want them to point something specific.
Okay, so for a timeline, if you can get your specific question to Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson is gonna now call Neola. Mr. Johnson, if you can communicate directly with Mr. Dodd, and y'all, y'all decide if it needs to go a step further. I'm, I'm more than comfortable with that communication. Everybody else, comfortable, okay?
It's fine.
There we go. Okay? All right, so, so with, with our, uh, we're gonna go with the three point oh two, but I just wanted to share that we did have two public input cards, one dealt specifically with three point oh three. And Mrs. Cronin, I'll call you up at the same time, is that's okay? Okay? Okay, three point oh two, Superintendent?
So our principals, y'all are welcome to stay. I know y'all were here for that first item, but if, if you need to get back to your schools, I wanted to go ahead and let you head back. Thank you for coming and thank you for all your work on this, and we'll, um, to be continued.
We'll see y'all again.
All right, so item three point oh two, um, high school maintenance project. So several projects have been bought, brought to the board, um, previously, and so I asked this morning, we have an update on those. And the first update is going to be from our fabulous principal from Mount Dora High School, Ms. Marlene Strawn. She's gonna give you an update on the, the project that's specific to her school at the request of, um, the community that's done a lot of work alongside the district on that project, and then Mr. Carr will give you a few other updates.
Yep. That one right there is fine, because, yeah, well, either way, it's just gonna be the back of your head, right? Is that correct? Okay, so if you wanna turn your chair around and face the camera.
Well, thank you, um, Superintendent and Board for having me, and thank you, Mr. Carr up front, who's been a phenomenal partner throughout all of this. So I guess, listening earlier, I'm, I am the queen of beautification, so I pay for a lot at Mount Dora High School, but we look really good. And hopefully we're gonna look a lot better, and I'm not asking the board for a dollar of making this project happen. Um, we have a fantastic community who has truly embraced us, and this is really and truly as far as, um, the beautification of the stadium itself, separate from the field. So we'll get to that. Uh, this is a, a project that has been in the works, I would say, for years and years and years. I've been at Mount Dora High School, um, over ten years now, all combined, so happy to be back home. And this was kind of discussed when I was in AP there, and it's finally one of those, let's, you know, put our money where our mouth is kind of thing, and we want to move forward. And I think we finally have got to the point where this vision is really and truly becoming a reality, and it's very exciting. So I passed along, um, just some renderings, just so you could have a visual, I'm a very visual person. And David Jess, um, actually did the architectural design, so I have those, and he did it all pro bono. In fact, most of the work so far has been pro bono. So our vision and our goal, and the reason I'm here today is because, um, we are at the point where it looks like we're moving forward, and I just wanted the board, um, to, kind of be aware of where we are and what our goal and our vision and moving forward is. So phase one is really the buildings, and that's where you see kind of the, the picture of, of the building of what he created. The other ones are the stadium project, the two scopes. We're actually, um, looking to flip lock the home and visitor side, because logistically it just makes a lot more sense. It's where the locker rooms are on that side, the, the parking is, um, just a better option. The, um, the sun, the sun is in the home sun, so it's plus that. Um, so there's a lot of logistical reasons for that, and so we've gotten the, um, the architects and the construction crew, um, who are working on this to get all of the business up. Mr. Carr's been right there with me the whole way, um, and we've had a lot of fun with this project. So our initial goal and our budget for the buildings, um, for phase one is one million dollars, and, and we're pretty much there. So it's, we're really excited about that, because it's one hundred percent community funds that were raised. So we did get a five hundred thousand dollar matching grant from the Mount Dora Community Trust, and, um, we've received well over a hundred thousand dollars in cash donations from the citizens of Mount Dora. We also have, um, a commitment from WT Land for two hundred and fifty thousand as well that will go towards that. So we've got a lot of fundraisers coming up. In fact, this Friday is a golf tournament at the Country Club of Mount Dora, which should bring in more. And then I wanted to personally invite you, on November twentieth, um, is our centennial celebration, where one hundred percent of the proceeds will go to this project as well. So for those of you who don't know, what better time than now? It is our one hundredth anniversary at Mount Dora High School. So we opened our doors in nineteen twenty-one, our first graduating class was nineteen twenty-two with four graduates. So we've come a long way, and we're really, really excited, and so that's where we are. So I, I, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about this project and our timeline and where we're going. And I also wanted to publicly thank Mr. Carr and Superintendent Corny for their help with the field. So I know there's a lot of miscommunication when you hear stadium project. There has been problems with the field for years, and we've done a lot to correct it, to fix it. And it's now to the point where it, we need a complete overhaul, so it just makes sense. It's a hundred years, the field's being redone, let's try to do the whole stadium, and so that's where we're at. Um, and I'm happy to report that work, the construction on the field, um, and I thank you guys for your support. You are taking care of that, starts December tenth, and he can talk there about.
Ish.
December-ish, December-ish, um, so that's where we are. And then the other piece that you got as part of another fundraising project is, um, you can see in the renderings here, we're gonna actually have bricks um, around the flagpole and so forth, and those bricks are being sold as a fundraiser right now, and so you can have one engraved if you'd like. I brought plenty to pass around. And so if you want to kind of have your legacy, if you will, I personally bought one myself. I had to have my one team stamped on there, so hopefully be there, who knows how long, but, yeah. So we're really excited about the project, and I'm gonna have to answer any questions that you may have.
I wanna make a statement real quick.
Yes, sir.
When you, when you moved over to Mount Dora High School, um, I got a phone call from Larry Baker, who's very, I'm very close to Larry.
Yes, sir.
And he had this whole list of things he was gonna do for you. It was all about leadership, and so that speaks very highly of you coming to Mount Dora. And, uh, Rob English happens to be my neighbor, and he's very excited about the fundraising. And again, it's, it's, that's a fish smells from the head down, and it's your leadership that is driving this. So just as an observation.
Well, it's definitely been a team effort, and I thank you for that, and, um, Mr. Baker has been wonderful, um, Rob English has been amazing. The Community Trust, as I mentioned, five hundred thousand, and then they're not stopping there, as if that wasn't enough. They're behind all of these fundraisers with us. Sarah Herrick's been amazing, so it's been a lot of fun, and, um, I'm very appreciative for, for their leadership as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just, um, obviously, I've been watching you for a long time. She, is, is, she really is an amazing leader. She taught, or she, she was the principal for my mom and gave my mom probably the very best last year she could have had. But, um, I'm in the nineteen seventy-seven year book for Mount Dora High School, and, uh, it's just really cool to see how far you guys have come. And to, like, my dad taught, and so I was like, the baby of the future or some such thing. So I just think it's really cool and that you guys are hitting a hundred years, and, and I know how bad that field has been forever, so I'm glad it's getting an overhaul.
It, it is time, and the, in this phase one, we'll not only basically replace the buildings that are there, as you can see. We wanted to kind of keep the eclectic look and the, the tradition, if you will, the, the stadium, you know, that was built in nineteen sixty-one. Um, so it's coming up on its fiftieth anniversary, so we wanted to, you know, keep, keep that, that look. Yet it's, it's time, and so that'll also include, um, some additional seating, some landscaping, painting, and then of course, being in, um, all of the, the legal requirements for ADA and so forth, so. Um, hence the one million dollar mark, just for that, some people think, gosh, that's a lot of money. It also will create an endowment. So we have thought about the future, about future upkeep, maintenance, and those kind of things, so, um, that's where we got that initial number.
Well done. Well done. Okay, thank you very much.
Really nice job.
Mr. Carr, you?
Well, I'd just like to say, thanks. Thanks to Marlene, it's been a pleasure to work with her and her committee. Um, it's, it's actually a joy. I look forward to talking to her and Tral with regard as we're moving forward, you know, with this project. It, it is very exciting, um, you know, to be a part of it, and, and again, I would just like to be remiss if I don't say it from under the direction of the Superintendent and the funding assistance from Mr. Ward, you know, the projects that I'm gonna speak on, as well as this project of, uh, would, would not be possible, it's just that, that simple. And likewise, addressing the fees, um, which, which is somewhat pertinent to what Mr. Dodd was saying, uh, there's, there's always been a gray area of what can be spent on athletic fields, and, and again, under the leadership of the Superintendent and the assistance of Mr. Ward, and then obviously, the outreach of community support, um, and, uh, to, to go to the boosters, et cetera, which we'll, we'll get to, um, as, as Ms. Luke has been involved with another project that I'd like to commend her on, and her assistance and her outreach to the community as well, combined with our assistance. So with that, yeah, the field is gonna be completely, uh, redone, um, and what I mean by that, it's actually gonna be stripped, and then certain portions of it, we're gonna go down to a depth of about two feet to remove the muck, uh, which gives it this spongy-like feel, which in some cases, Marlene has had to deal with heavy rains where the field would be not playable, so we're gonna remediate those, those conditions. So, uh, again, from Marlene and her team, thank you very much. So that, that's what's going on there. Um, as I mentioned to Ms. Luke, uh, the Eustace Girls softball field, uh, we're relocating on Gulf Avenue, or Gulf Street, whatever I always get that, on Gulf, uh, across from the boys, and, uh, so that's, that's a complete makeover, uh, where we've basically gutted that field and redone the field to include all new siding and clay, uh, as well as a complete retrofit of the concession stand, um, sidewalks going to the concession stand, in addition to renovating the restrooms, adding restrooms, adding a coach's office and, and meeting room, um, new batting cages, bullpens, uh, we're gonna have enhanced parking area and seating over 300 people, uh, where we, that just could not be done at the existing location, and every time it rained there, we had significant erosion problems and, and safety issues. Um, I would like to commend, uh, Ms. Luke and, and, and Coach Beal and Tracy Clark and, and all for working in the community to provide assistance, as this undertaking has cost significantly more than what was in the budget, so with that, we've gotten generous donations for the, the, um, basically, the, uh, the, the bullpen area and, and the scoreboard and, and foundation. So, uh, again, thank you for, for that and looking forward, and progress is going very well. I encourage everybody to go by and take a look and, and see the, the massive improvements. Um, it's, it's, it's significant. Um, and one thing that's, that ended up just being a huge cost with everything that we're dealing with, with just the shortage, which we all know that, is, is the lighting, whi- which, which is actually almost half the cost of the project, which will have compliant lighting on, on proper poles, et cetera, and give us the illumination that we need for, for the girls. And, and that's actually, you'll see that on the Board Doc coming up at the next Board meeting. And in addition to that, um, we just, we, we put out the bids for the repair of Lake Mineola Track, uh, which, which, Board members, you probably know the history to that. We've, we've had just constant repair issues. So, uh, again, we're gonna be completely stripping and resurfacing that. Um, where we are in that project is the questions that the ITB, or the invitation to bid, were concluded last week, and we're on schedule for them to submit the bids on the 8th of this month, so we're looking forward to that. Umatilla High School, we're very excited to again, work with the boosters there on the scoreboard. Boosters have purchased the scoreboard for Umatilla High School, and what the district is doing is we looked at the engineering for providing the Futterston Foundation and the structural steel to get that sign up. So I'm happy to report that the Futterston Foundations are in, it's been inspected, we're just waiting for a little bit more cure time, and the scheduled installation of that is supposed to commence also on the 8th. Likewise, at Umatilla, the press box, um, coach's box, whatever we'd like to call that, that has also been there for, for eons. It is supported on the old telephone poles, which are deteriorating rapidly. So, we have just concluded receiving bids. Matter of fact, we just got the bids in last week, and Mr. Wingo and I will be working to, to select a vendor to, to get that project going, so we're finally there. We, we did, uh, have an engineer design, uh, the press box and the structural elements required to support that press box, so that's why we got the solid numbers for that. So we're really excited about, about that, and we'll keep you posted. Um, also, um, one of the last projects we have on athletic is the Eustace High School Press Box, working with Tracy Clark on that. He's been very patient, he's not here, but I'd, I'd like to reference his name to say he's been patient with regard to waiting for us, for that to be renovated, so that we'll be able to do in-house and renovate that project in, in-house. So, that's all that I have on athletic field updates.
May I make a comment? Mr. Rethais, can I make a comment?
Please.
I wanted to say thank you to the Board, because I know that before, we didn't have a mechanism in place, and we talked about having a five-year capital plan and something in reference to athletic fields and those renovations, and I know that we all have probably heard from constituents about field issues of some kind or another, or track issues, or press box, or scoreboard, and playgrounds, and all of the things, and so, I don't, I think that we couldn't have done this seven years ago when I first started on this board. This would not have been an option to to sit up here and hear these projects that are actually underway now and that are being funded. I just, I, I'm very appreciative as a mom of, of athletes, and, um, thank you, Mr. Carr, because I know that also adding projects to your plate that are being funded adds work to your plate, so.
It's all part of the fun.
He, he has been very responsive to the Eustace High School Girls softball field, and obviously, Mrs. Strawn's request, and obviously, Mr., Mr. Clark's request, and, and like Mineola High School, and so, we appreciate, that's in addition to all the other duties that you perform, so thank you guys, and thank you, Mr. Carr.
I do think.
May I?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Oh, I just have a question. Um, uh, for many years, we talked about, um, rubberizing the, the Taverrius High Track. Did that sort of fall off?
No, it, it, it hasn't fall off. That, that is still a consideration. Um, we, we did get some bids on that. Um, it was, it was considerably more than we anticipated. Also, to do that, do we expand the lane, which, which even, and to do so, created a, a problem with the design and layout of that, and then, uh, consulted Mr. Hogan, and also consulted some individuals at, at the state for their interpretation with that holdback on meets, and so the, the comment back was, um, not really, it really wouldn't hold back on meets, um, but it would be desirable, so it, that is, that's still a, a project that we consider, but it, it's not of, at least unless I get other direction from the Board, to be quite frank, it's, it's not of immediate assistance, because I've got other areas that, that are in disrepair, that potentially could be a hazard, or, or an upcoming hazard, that, that I will focus my energies on.
Do we have any, um, I guess the phrase would be like meet-level tracks? I don't know, like, the kind of tracks, like as we're refixing the fields, do we have any, like, at any of our high schools on this end, have a track that would lend itself to being rubberized for like meets and serve that purpose, even if it's not at Taverrius?
Well, if it's, you're talking about in the north or in the south, because that's where we're doing Lake Mineola, because that, that is, but as far as in the north, it would be, Taverrius would really be the track. We can look at, you know, Mount Dora, but I believe that, that is also short.
I only have six lanes.
That's why I thought only six lanes, and that's the issue. They really want eight lanes, and, and anybody else can, no, they can correct me, I don't know.
Because you, I don't know.
But it's eight lanes, and, and that's the issue. Um, and so, to re-engineer the, the track is it just ridicul- very high numbers, very, very high numbers. So, you know, when I do a cost-benefit analysis, and what we're going to yield, I mean, I'm talking like, like a million dollars, and, and, and that money could be.
Broken up and, and.
Yes, with the age of our schools, as you know, our, our, our district schools are average 30 years old, and and, and, and as, as Luke, you know, kindly pointed out, we, we, we have a lot of projects going on.
Yes.
But I think the benefit of us adding now these kind of projects to our capital plan is it gives a five-year and, and it's, it's project-specific then. So rather than us speaking about, um, projects and then throwing them into the hamper, that I thought Mount Dora was already on the list, by the way, the track. I mean, I, I mean, I'm sorry, Taverrius is on the five-year plan.
That's what I don't know. I don't know what's on the.
I think.
No, it's.
I mean, I know we have it.
To us a little while ago, we can look at it again.
But the little things are the little things.
Because we're, we're actually a little bit ahead, I think, with particularly Mount Dora, um, so we can shift some money, or she can shift some people to donate money to us.
We'll do that annually. Is that similar to our five-year capital plan wherever?
It, it's on the five-year capital plan. That's what we added, these major projects too.
Right.
Yes, yes, we're in.
Yep, so I think that is, that is like a
That is a little more, is what I'm hearing.
Yep.
So throw it on there, but we might have to finance it over years or something.
Thank you. The boss is prompting me to add one more thing, some books on athletic floors, and that is the dance floor at Leesburg High School, or dance studio floor for training. So we, we are in, in the final process of getting, I need one more bid, and, uh, and, and so that I'm, I'm hoping to move that forward, so. Thanks Superintendent, I appreciate that coaching. And, and just one more final plug, I've committed to, to Marlene for, to buying a brick, so, uh, I encourage everybody to buy a brick. This is a legal brick, um, and, and, and it can be, uh. Oh, well, for those that grew up in the seventies, you might understand that it kind of dazed me, but anyway, so I encourage, encourage you to do all that.
Leesburg High will be really happy, by the way, about the dance floor.
Thank you.
That program went from, gosh, like, 10 kids a few, like, three or four years ago, and now there's well over 100 kids in the dance program, but we still didn't have a floor. So, I'm really excited that we were able to provide that, thank you.
I, I agree, absolutely. Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, now we're gonna go into public input, because we're getting ready to move into 3.03, so I'll ask, um, Mrs. Smith. Smith, you have three minutes.
That's weird, but I don't have my screen up, so, give me a second. Give me a second here, because I was coming to, to talk a little bit about our FEAs, um, FEA is Florida Education Association, their legislative priorities also, because I know, I think we have done this before, but I wanted you guys to know that we are in partnering, let's call it, with everybody. And, uh, Florida's public schools, as we know, are the best places for our students to learn and to grow, and I'm reading from their document. But there is work to be done. The Florida Legislature must demonstrate their commitment to ensure every child receives the education they deserve, regardless of their race, income, or zip code. The past, uh, path to ensuring all students receive a world-class education is grounded in three principles. Investment in our neighborhood public schools, student success, and recruitment and retention of educators. Their priorities for this year are, students deserve a high-qualified and certified teachers to attract the strongest teachers and support staff. Florida must increase average pay to rank in the top five nationally for all teachers, not just new teachers. Number two, provide qualified, experienced teachers the opportunity to enter, enter long-term contracts, so the best teachers stay in our schools and don't seek jobs elsewhere. Number three, protect the Florida retirement system. Number four, prioritize teacher-led assessments and learning over the state-mandated standardized tests. And five, respect the rights of people to make decisions locally. I can send this document to the Board members and to Ms. Superintendent, um, if you would like, and I, I will
Please.
I will gladly send this to you.
Please, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Cronin?
Good morning Superintendent, Board members. So I also see on your legislative priorities that you're addressing the minimum wage. Um, you know, I think that we have a lot of issues, um, keeping up with the minimum, the minimum wage. I thi- I believe we need to pay more than minimum wage to get good qualified employees, and the bigger problem is increasing the pay of your current employees, paying for their experience and their dedication to the district. If you look at our pay scale right now, most of our pay scale starts under $15 an hour. Pay grade 13, used to be a fairly good wage. It's 1404 an hour. That's for your electricians. That's for your AC mechanics. That's for your diesel mechanics. How many of you go and pay $14 an hour? Um, you know, you've gotta look at, um, your IT folks, your data folks. We have so many classifications that need to earn more money. Most of these jobs earn $30 and more an hour outside, outside, in the outside world, you know, um. Uh, we've had a mechanics position that's been posted for over a year. I've seen that we have a refrigeration tech that I've noticed has been posted since school started. Bus drivers. Everybody knows we're short bus drivers. Why does everybody know that? Because their parents are waiting for kids to get picked up. The schools are waiting for kids to get there, and then the opposite in the afternoon. So would bus drivers start at 12, 13 an hour? So, okay, let's bring them up to $15 an hour. Well, think about it. One of our other big problems we have in this district is student behavior. So, $15 an hour, would I rather drive 60, 70 kids sitting behind me by myself on a bus? Maybe I wanna go deliver flowers, right? We have students that cuss people out every day. Every day. It's almost like they're running our school systems. We have, we have employees that are injured due to our students. I was in a meeting the other day, and more than half of the workers' comp cases on that list were injuries from a student. So, you know, it's almost like, are the parents, are the, are the kids running, running the system? I know that we have, you know, things have changed. We sit here and just talk about what the fields look like when you was in the seventies. Well, you know, when I was a kid and I went to school, I would take any punishment I got at school and hope they didn't call my house. But that's not how it is today. So there's a lot of things that we need to take into consideration. Um, you know, we've got approximately 100 positions daily that are open. Custodial and teacher assistant positions, we can't fill and keep filled. Every week, it's, it's a different school. This week, it's Pine Ridge Elementary. They're short three custodians. How do you keep a school clean when you're shorthanded three people? I have more to say, but I heard the buzzer, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cronin.
Mr. Rethais, can I run a motion real quick?
Excuse me? Okay, let's take a, um, real quick five-minute break.
Thank you. Thank you.
I still think that needs to be topped.
You like that at the top. We can certainly.
I think that still needs to be at the top. But I also think there needs to be some. I don't want to add any more words, but just some history behind it is where we've gotten about five and a half million right over two years. And we didn't get it this last time because we were $2 over. But but that's also because they're using the computation, the compression we've got in the year before. So they added those dollars, which you always start at zero and go forward. I don't know if we.
Yeah.
If there's a legislator that would take it on to say now we we've got it and had to vote on every year. But also, what does that formula look like? How does that's really getting into me.
Simpson's still there. He'd be the one.
Oh, yeah.
Because he's so smart. He's really smart, like and gets in the weeds.
Okay, good. Okay, that was my only comments, Mrs. Luke.
My, um, like if we're looking at a like percent of our inflation, um, I would definitely talk to Scott. I think he's here.
He's back there.
He's back.
Oh, there he is. Because I don't know if like CPI is the right index or if there's a better index type fun, you know, or met like metric. I don't know if there would be a better metric to look at. That would include, you know, like, because if they paid us a sum around inflation, that that also does include teachers and staff like and our SEIU folks.
Our Florida Department of Revenue already uses CPI as what caps our mileage or save our homes. So it would be just using that same methodology.
That's their metric. Yeah, use their metric.
That would be suggested.
Good. Good.
So we'll make that addition and we'll move your bullet to the top.
Thank you.
When I spoke to the delegation, knowing that I had very limited time, I did speak to the compression. Um, as well as really what has been our priority is to give us the funds and the base student allocation instead of all these, all the restricted funding that would give us the flexibility to be able to address the salary issues and some of the things that we're dealing with. So, um, when we think about that one pager, those were the kind of the highlights that I spoke to.
And I know, I think, as some folks look at some of the bullets that we've added here and read about the addressing the school districts that are below the 47.5. But I think the piece to understand why that is so important for veteran teachers is that until we're at that 47.5, the salary increases for new teachers are 150% of the salaries that we're giving to our veterans. And and, you know, that just furthers, you know, the compression issue that we've got. So, um, so while it looks like we're advocating in that bullet, I guess, for the news, I think that's really everybody, right? The 150% is got those handcuffs have to come off of us.
Yeah, I didn't realize they came off at.
Right.
They do come off.
When you're at the 47.5.
Less restriction.
I didn't realize that. That's at least we get there. That's.
But the problem is at the rate that they're funding us, it'll take us a decade to get to 47.5, right?
And then it'll probably move.
And then it'll, yeah, then 47.5 will be irrelevant again, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
We're good.
So I'll bring those back again, some changes.
Superintendent, 344. This item is actionable, by the way.
And we have Helen LaValle. She is, um, we we normally see Kelly Randall and Helen is filling in for Kelly today and has, um, very been very instrumental working on this project. So she's gonna.
Yes, please remember I'm a newbie, okay? Okay, um, it is that time after 10 years and they release the census data. Elective bodies are required to consider reapportionment to balance the population within their districts and school boards are included in that. So what I will do is take you through the presentation. We do have some timelines. Um, I have a list of the guidelines that were used for the evaluation. And then I'll take you through the three options that we evaluated. So the next slide, um, tells you a little bit about our timeline. The census data was released back in August. Um, the board accounting commissioners actually released their final draft in early October. Um, we did share the information for the proposed, um, school board districts to, um, with the supervisor of elections. And today, November 1st, we're here for this meeting to discuss the proposed school board member districts. Um, we have a proposed public hearing on November 8th. And that will allow opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed districts. And then with proposed board adoption on December 13th at the regular school board meeting. After, um, adoption, then it's published in the newspapers. Um, the guidelines that we use for the evaluations, there's several of them. Um, the major one to balance a population. And if we had optimum population, that would be the 76,791 on the next slide. Um, we did have a 5% deviation that we wanted to stay within. So we did have a minimum and a maximum population to look at. Uh, we did use the 2020 census data that was released. We wanted to keep one high school per district. And where practical, we wanted to maintain, um, the school representation within districts. Um, equal educational facilities within districts. And we did not want the district boundaries to divide cities. Um, some additional guidelines we looked at, next slide. Um, where possible, we wanted to minimize the disruption of election precincts. Um, we did not draw the boundaries to favor or disfavor a political party or incumbent. Um, they were not drawn with the intent or result of denying anybody, um, um, equal opportunity to participate in the process. And where feasible, the districts, um, were made up, um, using, uh, uh, city and county and geographical boundaries. Next slide. So what we did was we took the current board member districts and we applied those guidelines to the districts. Um, and to see if they actually fit within that optimum population. And if you see on the next slide, the answer is no. Um, on this, the current board member districts, uh, District 2 and District 5 were lower than the minimum and District 3 was higher than the maximum. So then we moved to the proposed, the proposed board accounting commission districts, next slide. Next slide. Um, and applied those same guidelines, um, to see if it worked within the optimum, uh, population. Next slide. Um, and as you can see, it did meet the optimum population distribution. However, next slide. Um, 16 schools would change board member representation and one board member would no longer reside in their current district. So then we went back to the current, uh, board member districts and did some adjustments. Next slide. And as you can see, next slide, that we did meet the minimum, um, or the optimum population distribution with this one. And the next slide, we had minimal disruption to any school board member representation for schools. Um, we had Round Lake Charter and Sorrento Elementary that went from District 4 to District 5. And then Pine Ridge Elementary, which went from District 1 to District 3. And all board members reside in their current district. Next slide. And this here is a list of the schools within each, uh, board member's districts as it would be on the proposed, uh, board member district map. And with that, we have a recommendation to move forward. Uh, you must remember that, um, a decision or adoption is only made in odd number of years. So we have till the end of the year to make a decision on proposed district.
So the one that's recommended in board docs is, uh, was modified from number five. Yeah, can I ask, because that's the one, like, I looked at the mall, I looked at the mall and I was like, oh, I'm gonna need to look at, uh, I'm gonna need to ask Kelly. Um, and so as I'm looking at this version, um, my boundary for Treadway cuts Treadway's, uh, how do you, uh, neighborhood? Kind of in half, like literally parents will be across the street from Treadway and and are gonna have to take their kids, are gonna have to bus their kids to Taveries.
And that is in the proposed district.
District 2 and once Taveries, is that you, Stephanie?
Ms. Cunningham.
Ms. Cunningham? Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
But it's not moving kids, it's only moving representation.
There's.
No. Oh, also, this is just districts?
Yeah.
This is just for us? Not a vertical. Okay, never mind.
No rezoning of any.
Okay, well, then it doesn't matter. Okay.
Five more times, please.
Yes.
No reason.
You're right, okay. Then I don't care. It's fine.
Have me worry there.
Yeah, no, I just didn't want the kid to have to go somewhere else. I was like, they're literally gonna see the school. And I, I'd be so mad.
She said that again.
No attendant foul.
All right, I'm good, I'm sorry.
Okay, any other comments or is this something we want to vote on this?
It is actionable, so that's why it's a special meeting, so we could vote to adopt this as the one that we would move forward to for public input.
So you make the recommendation.
Thought we were moving to schedule a hearing.
Uh, next slide, please.
We are on the November the.
And this would be the recommendation.
I'm sorry. That we, that the public hearing on this one, but we're approving this one.
Yes, the proposed 2020 census.
Who makes that motion?
We're not approving or proving that it moves forward for input, right?
Yes.
Correct.
So you don't actually vote?
We're voting to.
We're voting to push this one forward. Yeah, that's all we're doing. So we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or o. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Mr. We on audit? Mr. Mock?
Good morning, school board.
Good morning.
I have before you the final audit for the prior school year 2021. And it was the Skyward module audit, uh, that I completed. Uh, next slide. Um, the objective of this, uh, audit was to review the, the software, the Skyward software package and the various modules that reside in that software package. And look at, um, whether we were using each and every one of those software modules. And to see if there might be savings if we, um, if we were not using them by reducing them from the current, uh, software. Looking through a loss. Great, okay. So I started by looking at all the billings, um, for this, for the Skyward software that we have paid from 2013 to 2022. And, um, we paid, um, wow, we, uh, between 2013 and 2016, we paid about $4,678,476 when we, um, started the implementation of Skyward. Uh, that that broke down into five categories. One was the module licenses, uh, training, data conversion and mitigation, software fees and custom programs. The module license was, uh, 2.8 million, almost 2.9. Uh, the data conversion was a little over 600,000. Software fees were 430,000 and training was 762,000. Um, and then the, we did very little, um, custom programming, which was about $3,000. So that's how it broke down. The module license is, um, is the continuation fees that we continue to pay today to keep, uh, for various things like, um, bug fixes and, uh, minor upgrades to the software as, as they continue moving forward with it. Um, the software fees are what we paid, uh, obviously for, for the, uh, purchase of the, of the 30 modules. So we're to go, just did not go through everything, but, um, we, we purchased 30 Skyward modules. 16 were business slash finance modules and 14 were on the student side of the Skyward software. Of that, uh, from that 2013 to the 2016, that three-year period of implementing this, the Skyward software in the district. Um, after that point, looking forward, IT had already, uh, started the process of looking at, at the software and what we weren't using. And they found that, um, two of the business modules were not being used and six of the student software modules were not being used. So, uh, they determined, and that's on the next slide, sorry. That was on the next slide for findings and, um, the total expenditures that that were made, uh, were 302,700 that were paid for these modules, but we did not deploy them. And I hesitate to go that far because I asked for documentation on the implementation of Skyward. And we didn't maintain that documentation. I'm not sure whether we documented it all and didn't keep it or whether we didn't document it and it was in the people's heads when they left. So people that have left the organization obviously took that knowledge with them and it wasn't provided in documentation. Normally, um, when you go through a major software, um, implementation such as Skyward, you would have, um, a pro, a project manager that would, um, maintain that information. Um, Microsoft has a product for project management. Someone, uh, runs that and they collect all the documentation. They, they actually, it's all detailed out, every step that we would take in the implementation of it. And then they would be gathering that documentation from people as it's being completed for the project. It also helps keep us on a timeline. I can't even tell whether the three-year timeline that it took to get, you know, from point A to point B, which is the end, you know, should we have been there sooner or did we actually take longer than what was anticipated or expected? Um, maybe the, maybe someone knows that, but I, but I, there was no documentation on that. So, um, next slide, my recommendation really came down and, um, was, was really looking at the, the fact that we didn't have documentation around the project. Since IT had already, um, made the reduction in the, um, modules by eight from 30 to eight, uh, down to 22 modules. And, and the savings was already being implemented at the school district. Obviously, it was looking forward to next time we do a major, um, software, um, packy, uh, package, um, that we need to, to probably put in a, not probably, we need to put in a project manager that can document the action plans, that includes the processes, the phases, the timeline, key events. And especially at the end, what are the lessons learned so that we can use that the next time we do it? And historically, you know, software such as Sky, or yes, Skyward, that's a large package and has a shelf life. Um, talking with Mr. Weeks, 12 to 14 years. And we're coming up on that 12 to 14-year time period. And I, he shared with me that Skyward was already looking at, um, a major upgrade of their product in 2025. So it'll probably be a little bit beyond their shelf life. But, um, that'll be a point in time where we're probably gonna have to, um, look at, you know, integrating a, a upgrade in the software package. And it won't just be, you know, of someone making some keystrokes and then doing it in the system. But we're probably gonna have to implement some training. We're gonna have to look at how we're gonna convert some data, maybe not all the data, some might go through smoothly. But we need to look at that and, and see, you know, what, what would the timeline be and what resources do we need to make that a smooth transition, uh, into the school district? Fortunately, we got a number of years before that will actually happen. But, um, you know, we want to make sure that the software is implemented easier, it's less stressful on, on the staff. And it assists, and it also assists in driving down overall implementation, implementation costs and time. And, you know, and the fact that we're gonna receive at the end, well, what is presented to the board, which is hopefully, you know, we, when we're going to a new software, we're looking at, um, streamlining, you know, uh, processes and procedures across the district. So we'll hope, hopefully help lower costs overall.
Very good. Mr. Weeks, could I ask you to come up and, because I've got some questions, but they're more directed at him than your findings, so. So just for the board, a little historical prospectus, that right after I came on the board, they'd approved the Skyward. And for the first, like, four years of my service, this was the biggest, this was almost like a four-letter word. So, so I'm, I'm curious, it's kind of the, I'm curious if you can speak to the eight components. We, and we aren't paying for those, right now?
Sure, no, we're not.
Okay.
Not currently, yes, sir.
But if you could speak to where we are today with Skyward and then also with this aging out of the program, kind of what do you see?
Yeah, so I think it's a.
Is that okay, Morgan?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I think it's a great opportunity and I appreciate it.
But I don't think we're gonna hear you, though.
Oh, sorry, maybe I'm not close enough or better known.
Is he on?
He's on.
Okay, go.
So I think a, a couple of things. Um, one thing is that just historically, I had taken over that particular project, the Skyward project, about two years ago or so. And it was, uh, probably right before July, one. And of course, most of these bills are due in July. And so one of the first things I requested is to pull the existing invoice. And our team, probably in the first two weeks, the first thing that we did is did a study. And the part where, uh, Mr. Mock had discussed us getting rid of modules as far as the annual payment, um, that's when that took place. Because I know in my past experience, the first thing you want to do is make sure you're using everything. And if you're not using everything, at least shell, uh, paying for it for a while until you decide to deploy it, if you decide to deploy it in a different time. So we took that step fairly fast. I think, um, I also want to be respectful of the work.
Can I stop you, Tom? So a module that you would decide not to use, had we bought something that was doing the same function or?
So there's a couple of things. Um, one of them, I'll just give you an example, something that writes IEPs. So, uh, when you're writing IEPs, we actually use the state system peer to write IEPs. So that, that option was never deployed. One of the things that I looked at historically, just looking through the bill, is sometimes they will bundle things together as part of the initial purchase or so. And they're just trying to get you, you know, obviously into the system. And so they bundle that and then the annual maintenance kicks in. So it seemed like to me that some of the cost of these modules at first was low to bundle together with other modules that we may have been using. And then the annual maintenance kicked in. And I, I, again, always wanted to be respectful of people. Conversions are very tough things, especially coming from an older system like terms. And so, uh, because that's a definitely a legacy system. Um, I guess the thing I was gonna say is that they may have had that intention of rolling those out. And then other departments had said, no, we want to use peer and things of that nature. But it was important for me to align what we were, the district was being charged. And, and as a result of that, I think we found close to $88,000 worth of reductions, uh, just from then. And that was a yearly cost. So as that multiplies out over years, then that was a good opportunity for us to go ahead and save some of that money.
That's where the 300,000 came.
Yeah, so for past payment, so. Um, as far as moving forward, I think that's a great point. Um, in the technology roadmap that we, uh, had, uh, workshop with y'all, basically, we had talked about reevaluating Skyward. Um, it is getting to be a little bit of an older system underneath. And one of the number one things that people need is the ability to get data out. And the thing that I'm looking for almost always is how can I make people's jobs, uh, easier? I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but like, if you have a couple of extra clicks or five or 10 extra clicks every time you're doing something, you multiply that by thousands of times. Um, the other thing that's really important and been kind of a cause for me has been our data quality. Um, and the data quality has a lot of moving parts and some of those parts are appreciated to people like data interclerks and things of that nature. However, um, it's very, very important for me to us to report to the state what we're doing. If you don't report to the state what you're doing, you can do it all day long and it doesn't, it doesn't count for funding, it doesn't count for school grades and it doesn't count for accountability. So I think we are probably in a phase where I had brought together some stakeholders, they had started looking at other products. The results of that were very positive on some of the other products that we were just exploring, not really committing to anything or even committing to a process as much as just looking to see what's out there. Um, I will say this, uh, the first quarter happened, it was a little more complex than we thought with other things. And so with that said, it's not that we didn't shell that work, we just decided to kind of prioritize other things, but it is definitely on our radar. So I think if we go forward, almost every project we have going forward has had a project plan. And it's had a pretty exhaustive listing of what the resources are, the timelines. I think one of the reasons why our department, along with y'all's help as far as providing the resources, is we're able to be very agile and very quick and I think very thorough, uh, because of that. I'm not saying everything always goes perfectly, but that's part of maintaining a project plan is knowing what doesn't and figuring it out for the next time. So I, I feel like these, uh, changes have been made. And like I said, I, the last thing I just, I guess I would just take the opportunity to say is, I do not want to, a, a lot of those people ended up retiring or other things of that nature. And they may have had a little bit more of an old-school analog, uh, i.e. filing cabinet types of system of managing that project that's just not available to us. Uh, and the fact that the conversion happened means that it was, there was a plan and that it went off at least somewhat according to, uh, you know, calculation. Because I can tell you, I've seen conversions that don't ever convert and that's a really bad one. So with that said, um.
Yeah, I think I spelled out on page four that there was definitely a plan. I listed it out here, so there definitely was a plan.
There was a plan.
Just wasn't documented as far as how it went or like he said, there's, to me, at the end, there's lessons learned. Can be extremely valuable going forward for any project, especially when you're looking at, like he said, you know, making that next decision. You know, what were some of the lessons learned from the prior time that you incorporate into that, into that, um, decision-making process?
Well, I, I do believe, because I wasn't on the board at the time when the decision was made, but we, we piggybacked on another district rather than it really being decided ourselves. So the board voted and then it was up to IT to try and implement. And it wasn't necessarily the program they would have chosen, is what I remember from the discussion.
And understanding, wasn't our backs against the wall a little bit with that old term system?
Yeah.
We had to get out of it.
Yeah.
Right.
It was, uh, about to not be able.
But and that's what we want to avoid moving forward. So that was the, the most relevant part when you mentioned about where are we as programs are curbing out, is to make sure that we have it funded or money stashed so that we're not kicking the can on that one, for sure.
Yeah, for sure.
It's too important.
I also wanted to bring up, just because my husband is in IT or in computers and I, I've just, I understand how a lot of these big computer pieces roll out. And like, like SAP is a big one for businesses, like on the backend for payroll and everything. And a lot of times, the, the, um, big tech companies will provide you, not provide, but of course, pay for a person or a service where you can get them to script, to write programs to, like, he, he's, he's writing programs to specify it for our needs for the teachers. And I don't think we had anything like that set up when we started. And I think that's part of why Skyward became a four-letter word. And so whatever program we choose, I think we need to invest in, it's almost like investing in a warranty. Like in, in biotech, we, we invest in, um, in literal warranties because I know my $500,000 machine is gonna break down, right? And I, I want, and my time's more valuable and I need that program, I need that machine to work. So I'm gonna hire somebody who will be there within 24 hours. And we can get those people. And, and then they can specific, specifically write programs to make it easy for our teachers using Skyward and teach us how to do that, whatever the next program is. I just want to plan in that funding.
I agree.
Even though I know that it's pricey, I think it's worth it.
I, I just wanted to add a little bit. Um, I know when Dwayne's speaking over here, he's speaking really about the student data system.
Yes.
And not my system, my, my side of it. I know Tom referred to it as the business side, but there's parts of the business side that are outside of finance. They're, they're, um, inventory related or whatever. But I, I will tell you that about the time that y'all were making that decision four years ago, um, Skyward was probably the only one that survived that had the finance side, the HR payroll, finance side that was successful. Um, Focus was one of the ones that was very strong in student, still is very strong in student. Um, but it did not have the good side for finance. So, um, I think as we go down the road, I think one of the first questions is if we're gonna look somewhere else is, should we keep finance where it's been successful and where it's been working at before we go out and try to find a system that does it all again? And then they may find somebody that's strong in student but weak in the other side.
That's, that's part of lesson four. See, that's, that's where I was saying.
And, and you don't need to just buy to, just to buy and upgrade. So if it's performing, then, then we, we attempt to partner with Skyward to see whatever enhancements. But now with the team that we have collectively, the brain power, we can make that decision. So I'm not advocating that we absolutely change Skyward because now that, no one has complained to me in like three weeks about Skyward.
Yeah. That's great.
Okay, any other comments? Thank y'all very much. Okay, board member comments. Start with Ms. Luke.
I, I really don't have any, I think I made enough comments during the meeting. I can't think of anything else off the top of my head.
Mr. Dodd?
Yeah, so I, I guess, I mean, I'd like to just start getting the message out. So last week, at Cypress Ridge, the PTO, some of the members of the PTO and the SAC boards had heard a proposal presentation that would essentially merge the student body of Cypress Ridge as well into the group of Claremont Elementary and Claremont Middle into one body, housing the K2 at the Cypress Ridge side, housing the 38 over on the Ureli coal site. And, and I know that the district is prepared, some road shows to go out, some kind of, you know, to showcase the, what that would all entail, with the pros and the cons of, of that sort of proposal. But, you know, being certainly a very ingrained in that community for a very long time, I, I do wanna hear from a lot of folks that, that would impact, whether they're faculty, staff, as well as parent side, is that, of that too. And so I encourage those folks to make sure they come out to those, those road shows, if you will. But also you feel free to, to reach out to me individually and share, share your comments, share your questions.
Tony Burns?
I'm good.
I wanna say you put in a lot of effort, Mr. Dodd, in being totally transparent with those folks. And it's very much appreciated by this board. And I don't have any comments, so Superintendent?
I just wanted to let the board know that we did finally receive our SR3 application and timelines and all of that, I think it was Thursday, late Thursday. So we are going to be meeting with our committee. Our first meeting will be this Friday and they've been notified, those who've asked to be a part of that group, so. I just, I can see your hand through the.
Apparently she wants to remember comments.
I had a calendar appointment, so I'm gonna stay up there.
Standby, finish.
So just, I'll keep you updated on the process. And of course, staff's very much engaged in getting that done. We initially had a timeline of, remember, we just got it Thursday? Timeline was November, the 10th was the deadline. So two weeks to put together a, a plan for well over $80 million. So Mr. Ward did contact them and we do have an extension that will give us a little bit more time. Because we definitely want to have this opportunity to pull the stakeholders together. And it really limited our opportunity to be able to get them together and we're committed to that. So thank you, Mr. Ward, for getting the extension. And so we'll be bringing to you our plan and what we'll be submitting for SR3 here in the next couple of weeks.
Ms. Luke? Anybody else have one? We're good? Okay, all right, Mr. Johnson? And we gave you your homework, so we'll look forward to hearing comments next time.
I was listening on the phone as we were meeting last night.
Oh, we appreciate that.
I just kept, when you asked me to get on the phone, I kept pushing the wrong numbers to mute back and forth.
Oh, you're the one. Okay, with all that said, great meeting, meeting adjourned.